We have an update from our Health and Community Services Department on the opioid epidemic. And we are fortunate to be joined by Dr. Thompson. And he will, I will turn the table over to him, turn the floor over to him.
All right, thank you. And I'm zooming from within council chambers for the first time. Um, is this audio going live then? Okay, perfect. And let me share my screen. Are you all able to see this? Perfect. Well, council members, Councilmember Kirshner, thank you for having me here today to talk about this important topic. Again, I'm Dr. Greg Thompson. I am a co-health officer here in Watcom County, and today I'll be talking about the opioid crisis that we are facing. So just in terms of a little bit of background, the term opiates refers to drugs that are derived from the opium poppy, and these are drugs that we have about 5,000 years experience with using them both medicinally. And about 5,000 years of experience of people developing addiction and dependence on these drugs, as well as people dying from overdosing on them. And you can see a few of the examples here, including opium and morphine and codeine. Uh, synthetic opioids are another uh, set of drugs that are based on the structure of the opiates, but they're made completely from lab-made chemicals. So these do not rely on growing poppies to be able to produce them. And these have been produced essentially because they have more specific or more uh, desired attributes. For example, fentanyl is incredibly important in uh, the operating room and in the emergency room because it has a very rapid onset, very rapid offset. And it's quite potent, so it's a great uh, pain reliever. Um, but as we'll talk about, it can be incredibly dangerous if it uh, is misused. And uh, just as one other interesting example, you can see there low paramide or Imodium, you may be familiar with that. That's an over-the-counter uh, synthetic opioid that actually is used for treatment of diarrhea. In terms of how the opioids work, uh, throughout our body, we have a series of different kinds of what we call opioid receptors. And these are represented in this cartoon by these little blue cup-like structures that sit on the surfaces of our cells. And the way that these receptors work is when they bind with specific chemicals. In this case, the opioids, they produce a signal that causes a reaction in our cells. And so in our bodies, the main function of opioids is pain relief, as you can see. Um, they can also decrease cough, like codeine is sometimes used for, and reduce diarrhea, as we discussed. Uh, they also have a number of side effects. Uh, these can be things such as euphoria, which is that intense feeling of pleasure, which may cause someone to seek out opioids. Uh, they can also cause sedation or sleepiness. And the most dangerous side effect is they can slow down or completely stop your breathing, which is the reason people typically die from overdoses of these drugs. Now, in terms of overdoses, we do have an antidote that can save lives in these cases. It's called naloxone and often sold under the brand name Narcan. You can see an example of the Narcan nasal spray here. It can also be given injected. But this uh, represents, or Narcan here is represented by this little green blob. So it basically binds to and blocks these opioid receptors. So it doesn't stimulate them, but it stops the opioids from binding to them. And when it's used in an overdose situation, that can allow people to begin breathing again and really bring them back from that deep sedation. So it it can be a lifesaver when it's used in the right circumstances. Now, when people use these drugs, the opioids, for a long term, they develop a number of uh, adaptations. One of them is called tolerance, and this is as you use these drugs more, you need more drug for the same effect. So a dose that was able to relieve your pain when you first started using it, you may need double or triple or quadruple or 10 times the dose as you've been using it for a long time. Um, and that becomes important when we talk about the potency of the drugs available on the street today. Uh, people also develop dependence, meaning that you require these drugs to continue to feel normal as your body adapts to them. When they're taken away, you go through what we call withdrawal. Um, and that is a uh, syndrome that is uh, associated with irritability and agitation. People can experience severe pain, tremors, diarrhea, and intense cravings for more of the drugs to try to feel normal. And most people who have long-term dependence on the opioids, the reason that they seek them out is to prevent withdrawal more than actually trying to get high. I'd like to talk a little bit about how that has gotten us to where we are right now. And I talk about this as the modern opioid epidemic, because as you have heard, we have 5,000 years of issues with dealing with opioids, and they've really been around since the founding of this country in terms of their impact on on the US. But the modern opioid epidemic really began in the 1990s. Um, it largely centered around a drug called Oxycontin, which is a long-acting opioid. And the theory behind the marketing of this drug was because it's long-acting and it doesn't have a quick rise in effect that um, people would not develop euphoria and therefore would not become addicted to it. Uh, it turns out that was completely untrue. It was nothing but marketing and associating this um, hope for less addiction and less side effects with uh, the desire to treat pain appropriately, um, it led to increased opioid prescribing and inappropriate opioid prescribing. So you can see in the bottom left, an example of one of these pain clinics that popped up during that period where people are waiting around the block to get in in the morning to get their prescriptions for these painkillers. Um, this led to widespread uh, addiction, widespread opioid use disorder, and started causing increases in deaths. So we divided this opioid epidemic up into three waves. Sometimes we'll call it four waves. But the first wave is the increase in prescription opioid deaths, and that's represented on this green line here. And this is deaths per 100,000 people in Washington State. So you can see that line increasing starting in the late 1990s, and it peaked around 2006 when we started realizing what a big problem this was, became more strict in our prescribing practices, developed prescription drug monitoring programs, so that if a person went to Dr. A and got a prescription, then they go to Dr. B, they can actually look it up and see, oh, you've already gotten a prescription. I'm not prescribing you another one. So we tightened up prescribing practices, decreased availability to these drugs. And as you can see, uh, deaths plateaued and started decreasing between about 2006 and 2010. However, there were a number of people who had already been uh, addicted or developed uh, dependence on these drugs. And so they turned to whatever options they had available, which in that time was primarily heroin. And this is what began our second wave of the opioid overdose death crisis. So you can see on the bottom left is black tar heroin and on the right is white powder heroin. These can be taken in different ways, but were often injected. And here's a graph of of what this caused. So in 2010, you can see the uptick in deaths due to heroin overdoses. Now, more recently, we've moved on to the third wave, which is the fentanyl overdose death wave. And this began in about 2016 in Washington State with the uh, availability of very cheap widespread fentanyl on the streets. Uh, in the rest of the US, it started around 2013 when these drugs first started being introduced uh, by cartels in the Midwest and the Eastern United States. So we're about three years behind. But by 2019 in Washington State, you can see fentanyl overdose deaths started to exceed those from heroin and from the prescription opioids, and they've continued rising since then. Now, in terms of Watcom County itself, this is not a pretty graph here, I apologize, but I wanted to kind of segregate the older data and the new data since they come from different sources. But um, in 2018, we had 11 drug overdose deaths attributed to any drug in uh, Watcom County. And that had increased fourfold over the next four years from 2018 to 2021. Uh, 2022, there was another approximate doubling of deaths. And I separate this data out because the old data is from the Department of Health. It's uh, kind of based on death certificate data. The newer data is from the Medical Examiner's Office, and this includes both confirmed and suspect deaths. And uh, it can take as long as six months sometimes to get the toxicology back that's sent out from the Medical Examiner's Office. So there's still a few cases from November and December that are waiting final confirmation from last year. Uh, the 2023 data is still uh, much lower than probably the actual deaths we have seen to date because there are a lot of cases that we want to be careful not to over-report possible overdose deaths. So these are waiting on toxicology still. Um, but so far this year, we've seen at least 35 and probably significantly more. Now, if there's one bit of good news, it looks like in 2022, the nationwide overdose deaths have uh, plateaued. So there are about 109,000 overdose deaths in 2021 and about 109,000 in 2022 as well nationwide. You know, I mentioned that in Washington State, we are about three years behind, so deaths are much lower than the national average here, but they are still climbing. Now, what about the impacts on young people? People have probably seen in the media that there have been at least three deaths um, in the media at least attributed to overdose deaths in uh, people under 18 in the last couple of months in our county. So this graph here, it's a little complicated, but um, this got a lot of attention about a year ago when it showed that yellow line on top that firearm-related injuries increase or um, surpassed, excuse me, motor vehicle uh, crashes as the number one cause of death in kids between the ages of one and 19. The the part that got a little bit less attention is at that same time, drug overdose deaths, which you can see circled in orange there, uh, became the number three cause of death, up from six or seven. So there was a dramatic increase in drug overdoses in this time. And this is a little bit surprising or puzzling in some ways because we know that kids are actually using these uh, more potent illicit drugs less than they used to. And I say this because we have survey data of high schoolers going back at least about 50 years. And there are multiple surveys across the US and within Washington State that all confirm this same information. But this red line on the top is uh, reported use of any illicit drug other than marijuana. It also doesn't include alcohol and tobacco. So this is things, you know, cocaine, LSD, opiates, heroin, all of those sorts of things. And you can see that those numbers back in the 70s and 80s were in that 15 to 20% range. Whereas by 2022, they're down to about 5%. So we're actually been seeing a fairly, a significant decrease in use of these drugs by young people, but more of them are dying. And this shows us why. Uh, the gray line here, which is increasing steeply, is deaths due to fentanyl. Um, and if you look at the other classes of drugs we're looking at, those deaths are basically flat over the last 10 years. But the deaths due to fentanyl started increasing in about 2016. So it's not that more kids are using drugs, but when they use them, the drugs that they're getting access to are much more potent and much more deadly. So what is it about fentanyl that causes it to kill so many people? Uh, number one, it's incredibly potent. So it's about 50 times stronger than heroin. And you see on the tip of that pencil, that little bit of white powder, that's two milligrams of pure fentanyl. That would be enough to kill the average adult. And as I mentioned before, um, people who have been using this for a while develop tolerance. So they can survive with these doses of it, whereas someone uh, who has not used these drugs before would die uh, due to just a single dose. Uh, it's also incredibly cheap. You know, we talked about now, uh, when the cartels produce these drugs, they no longer have to rely on farmers that produce poppies. They don't have to worry about the weather and the seasons and transporting large amounts of this poppy sap. Now they can just take industrial chemicals that are very, very potent and inexpensive and synthesize massive quantities of this and distribute it kind of like the the fast food model where there's a a fast food restaurant on every corner. Now there's potentially someone who can sell these drugs on every corner because it's so cheap and so widespread. Um, I'd argue that for people starting to use these drugs, and in some ways that they're more attractive, you remember what the black tar fentanyl looked like? And if you think about heating that up and injecting it into your veins, there's a fairly high barrier to entry. But with these drugs, they look like pharmaceutical-grade pills, so they look like something people are familiar with. And just to illustrate this further, on the bottom, uh, each of these pictures on the top shows an authentic pharmaceutical that has a legitimate purpose. And on the bottom is uh, a counterfeit version of it that is fake and made with fentanyl. So you can see the oxycodone on the left, the blues or M30s that cost about $2 on the street. About half of them contain a potentially fatal dose of fentanyl. Um, and then you see in gray that bar is Xanax and then Adderall on the right. And so all of these on the bottom are actually fake versions that are made with fentanyl instead of the legitimate um, substance. And the fentanyl is also being added and mixed into other substances from methamphetamine and cocaine and other things to just increase the addictive potential of those drugs and to develop uh, more users. When we talk about young people, the other thing I want to point out is that the situations in which young people are dying are different from adults. So the young people, most of them are dying at home. Uh, most of them dying of drugs now are dying of fentanyl overdoses. Uh, what's very different though is in the young people, and this is youth ages 10 to 19, only about a third of them, 35% had a known prior history of opioid use. So two-thirds of them had never been known to take opioids before. And that's really important because most of the adults have a history of chronic opioid use, and then they overdose. Most of these young people may be experimenting, and I use experimenting in quotes here, um, but with these drugs. And as we talked about before, just this availability of extremely, extremely potent drugs on the street increases that risk of death uh, dramatically. The other thing to note is that about two-thirds of the time, when they died, there was someone nearby who was a potential bystander who could have provided aid. And in about two-thirds of cases, that aid was not provided. So this is part of the reason it's really important to uh, train young people in the things that they can do to make sure that if someone is using, as much as we don't want them to use, that there are some safety nets, at least someone who can call 911, uh, someone who can provide naloxone, administer first aid. And it's important for them to also understand the protections that are given by the Good Samaritan Act, protecting them from liability and protecting them from prosecution for underage drinking or drug use if this happens. So I wanted to quickly touch on some of the differences in terms of how uh, drug overdose deaths impact people within our country. First of all, by age, you can see the vast majority of deaths are in people between 25 and 65 years old. So kind of that, what we would consider the productive working age with a lot lower deaths under 25 and over 65. You've probably heard the statistics that between 18 and 45 years old, that fentanyl or other drug overdose deaths appear to be the number one cause of of death in the US in that age group. And part of that is because they um, are using it a lot. Part of it is because people tend to die of fewer other things at that age. Uh, this graph shows the disparities by sex. You can see that top blue line is overdose deaths in males and the bottom green line is in females. So uh, males are dying at about three times the rate that females are of drug overdoses. And then in terms of race and ethnicity, and I apologize for not uh, orienting to these slides a little bit better, but the blue bars are deaths in 2020 and the green bars are deaths in 2021, and all of these are rates per 100,000 people in each of these demographic or age groups. So you can see this is looking at disparities by race and ethnicity, and the highest death rates we see in the US are among non-Hispanic, American Indian, and Alaskan natives. And that decreases over various racial groups to the lowest death rate being in non-Hispanic Asians. The other thing to point out is in all of these age groups, with the exception of the non-Hispanic Asians, uh, those deaths increased between 2020 and 2021. And just to round it out, I want to talk a little bit about some of those other risk factors that are a little less obvious. And this is uh, looking at adverse childhood experiences or ACES. Um, we know that the experiences you have as a young child or growing up um, have a dramatic impact on the chance of poor health outcomes when you get older and overdose death, suicide, and uh, drug addiction are no exception to this. So the adverse childhood experiences are typically a list of of 10 things. 10 experiences people can have in their childhood uh, that are categorized in abuse, either physical or sexual neglect or household dysfunction, things such as household substance abuse, divorce, incarceration, mental illness, or violence uh, among family members. And the more of these adverse adverse childhood experiences you have in your youth, the higher the risk you have of poor outcomes as an adult. So looking at alcoholism, if someone who has zero of these adverse childhood experiences, only about one in 70 people develop alcoholism. Whereas someone with seven or more of these, about one in six are alcoholic. And looking at IV drug use, it's about one in 500 for those with no adverse childhood experiences versus one in 30 for those with seven or more ACES. So in terms of thinking about preventing uh, these outcomes, it's important to think about what we can do to improve the context uh, or improve the milieu that people experience in childhood. And also if they experience these things, how they can recover from those and develop a resiliency and hope. So I'm going to close this with a metaphor of all of us being in this big boat that's taking on water. Um, and thinking about how we can all stay afloat here. And it's important, first of all, to prevent drowning in anyone who's overboard. Um, so preventing overdoses, things like administration of naloxone, that's really that lifesaver to rescue those people who are at the most immediate risk. We also need to bail out all that water that's already in the boat, so helping out people with substance use disorder. And that ranges from everything from outreach and treatment to recovery services to helping people navigate the most dangerous transitions. And two, two examples I would give is that some of the highest risk times for people dying of drug overdoses is when they leave incarceration and return to the community, and when they leave uh, the hospital or the emergency room and return to the community. Um, it's important to fix the leak, stop more water from coming in, or stop more people from developing addiction. So this prevention work, there are a lot of things we can do, looking at ACES, as we just talked about. We know that delaying the age at which uh, young people start using alcohol or smoking actually reduces the risk of a substance use disorder later in life. Um, we can do more to reduce unnecessary prescriptions after surgeries. Um, we can do more to reduce access to illicit drugs that are coming into our country and our communities. And importantly, we can build hope and resiliency, help give people the strength to uh, deal with these uh, issues as they come up in their lives. And for adults, those of us with young kids, being a trusted adult has been shown to reduce the risk of young people experimenting with drugs and developing uh, substance use disorder. And then finally, the things we can do to really strengthen our communities, just to make that boat bigger and stronger in general. Access to housing, access to employment, and mental health care, and developing community and cultural connections are all things that help both prevent onset of uh, substance use disorder and help people who are in recovery as well. So I just wanted to close with a little shout out. Um, I think everyone here is probably aware, but on the 27th and 28th, at Bellingham High School, we will have an all-day event. It's the uh, All Hands Watcom County Opioid Summit. It's going to be two days of learning, community building, or community discussion, I should say, and uh, working to discuss potential solutions uh, that we can implement here in the county. And we're really looking for people from all sectors to participate, everyone from schools and education, healthcare, the treatment community, uh, justice, policymakers, elected officials, and so on. So if anyone hasn't signed up already, uh, All Hands Watcom Count, uh, sorry, AllHandsWatcom.org, and uh, please uh, pre-register. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Thompson. Um, Councilmember Donovan?
Yeah, thanks um, for the presentation. So the bailing part about treatment. The third wave, synthetic fentanyl, are we kind of the same place we were with heroin and other things in terms of treatment, or is the treatment more challenging? Um, I mean, do, do we have? We have hope in terms of getting people into like treatment programs that work in the way that some of the ones in the past might have.
Yeah, I mean, we do have hope. It is definitely more difficult to treat, and I don't do treatment myself, but speaking with providers who do treat and providers in our community who have been doing that from over three decades. Um, this really is, fentanyl right now, a lot of them say is the hardest drug to treat. Um, the detox process is more challenging. The amount of time that people have to have to safely detox is more challenging. Uh, the need to escalate the medications that are often used in uh, medically assisted therapy, MIT, um, it's more intensive. So it is a harder drug to treat just because it is so potent, so addictive, and so impactful. The other part that's more complicated is that there's so much poly-substance use going on. So people who are not only using fentanyl but are also using methamphetamine, using other drugs. So it is a more complicated situation. It's harder to treat. Um, there are still many, many success stories of individuals are getting through treatment and rebuilding their lives. Um, and the other side of that is that the treatment uh, environment is a little better in some ways because now it is easier for providers to get into a space where they can prescribe treatment. So Suboxone, for example, um, the barriers to being able to prescribe Suboxone are less than before. And the other thing I would point out is we do have some pretty amazing examples in our area. You know, I'd specifically call out the the Swinimish tribe and their um, treatment center called Digualich um, is really nationally recognized as a, as a model for how uh, opioid treatment can be done. Uh, they do a lot of things other than just, you know, prescribing medicines and doing therapy. They have dental care, they have counseling, they they look after people's children when they're there getting services. Um, so there's, there's a lot of work that is being done, you know, the lamination as well. They're doing a lot of good work and have expanded some of their um, uh, some of their treatment options recently as well. So there are a lot of great examples. There's a ton more that needs to be done, though.
Thank you, Councilmember Ellen Boss.
Yeah, I, the first time I saw you give this program was a, what, like a month ago?
About that, yeah.
Yeah, I, I just kept thinking about it quite a bit because we always talk about this as like we're an addiction problem. We have an addiction problem, but when we're dealing with one pill can kill and you're showing us how many kids are doing this and they don't have an addiction problem. So I think with this type of a drug, I think we need to be real with ourselves on how we're going to deal with it, because it's it's more than just an addiction problem. Like, this drug is dangerous and one time could be all it takes, so. I keep telling myself as I'm trying to figure out what we should be doing here that um, this goes above and beyond an addiction problem. And so I hope that the the Health Department and the folks that deal with it every day are I'm pretty sure they've made that connection too, that it goes beyond addiction.
Yeah, no, 100% agree. And I think it's, it's less an either or and more a both and. And I think that it, it's a little bit of a different problem, like we were talking about in, in young people versus adults. And the response and the needs are a little bit different as well. Yeah, I think in those young people, it really is preventing that first use is the most important thing. We do have young people in our community, though, who um, have been using for months, if not years, and and um, there is treatment available. There are a few providers who are doing that, um, providing medication-assisted treatment for young kids who have developed an opioid use disorder. And we're having some successes there as well, but I 100% agree with what you said in terms of stopping that first use, use is the most important thing in young people. Whereas in the adults, that's also important, but helping people who already have developed an opioid use disorder is really important in that age group too.
Can I do a follow-up question?
Yeah, one minute.
Okay, so when I was a kid, I did DARE, Drug Abuse Resistance Education, right? And it got canceled because everybody said it wasn't effective. But with something like this, is education probably our best bet? And do you think the schools will go back to something like that?
I know I've talked a bit to the, well, yeah, first of all, yeah, so DARE outcomes weren't, we're not great with that, unfortunately. You know, I think more and more we feel that giving young people good data and good information is more effective than fear-based education, as ironic as that seems because it seems pretty scary when a single drug is able to kill you. Um, empowering young people and giving them a voice seems to be helpful, providing naloxone to kids, making sure that they know that uh, if they do call 911, if a friend has overdosed, that they are not going to be held liable. They're not going to go to jail if drugs or um, alcohol are found on the scene under the Good Samaritan law. So I think those things are all important. I think that education is incredibly important, getting naloxone into the hands of young kids. I think parents locking up unused medications, getting rid of unused medications, all those extra drugs that you may have available after you've had a surgery. Um, so those things are all important, and education is incredibly important as well. Um, it's not the only answer, but it's a big part of it.
And I can still sing the DARE song. I will, I'll save it for you right now, but I know all the words.
You can wear your T-shirt next time, too.
I actually have a DARE role model T-shirt too, that I wore in college when I was a DARE role model.
Awesome. Councilmember Ellen Boss, let's go on to Councilmember Galloway.
Yeah, just first, I want to thank you for this presentation. And quite frankly, I think this presentation could have taken up this, you know, full hour and a half. Because this is a huge issue, and so I hope that this is just the first of what will unfortunately be many council discussions and presentations on this issue. I have a lot swirling in my mind as I work to process through the science and data that you've provided, and I'm trying to conceptualize, you know, all the efforts that are happening at the state level through the Blake decision and the, and the subsequent Blake fix and fix 2.0, and thinking about our own lived experiences here in Watcom County. And I'm struggling to reconcile um, what feels like a, a public tug-of-war where you have two schools of thought. One is approach this crisis through a public health lens, and the other is through criminal legal lens. And I'm, I feel the tug-of-war because I almost I just want whatever works best and what is ever most compassionate for people and saves people's lives, and I don't know what the answers are. Um, so I don't know if we can, you know, I know we're running tight on time and we have other presentations, but if we can kind of um, plan to further this conversation and think about what public health interventions we can do at the county level. Um, you know, I liked your boat analogy and this, the part about reducing the availability. Um, and I don't know how to do that through a public health lens. Because I, I can conceptualize the proactive and I can conceptualize the reactive, but it's like that middle ground that I'm just not sure. Um, so anyways, that's kind of what's on my heart and mind, um, but appreciate your presentation and um, welcome continued conversation with my colleagues.
Yeah.
Uh, Dr. Thompson, if you could send us your presentation, that would be fabulous because that boat analogy was really, really good. Is it okay? It's just not, oh, maybe it is.
I sent it yesterday afternoon.
It's not on Granicus.
It's not on Granicus, but we'll find it. We're good. We can find it.
Yeah, I believe July 18th, joint meeting between Phab and the council. I, I think um, that's going to be talking, I believe about opioid settlement money, among other things. Is that right? So I think this is going to continue then. There's also the June 27th, 28th meeting. And then on August 1st, uh, Sam Quinones, uh, national author, wrote the book The Least of Us, and also he just had an article in The Atlantic talking about his thoughts about uh, incarceration and treatment and so on. Uh, he's going to be speaking August 1st here in Watcom County. That is um, details still to be worked out. So there's a lot that's happening that we're helping to sponsor and arrange and facilitate those conversations.
Thank you. Great. Um, Director Laughtonback, you had your hand up. Did you want to say something?
Greg, um, in his third
Greg, in his thorough self, took the words out of my mouth. I was going to just remind you all that you're having a special health board next month, but but he shared that and we'll have a lot more to add. And now that you've gotten some of this education and the baseline, we can really focus that meeting on talking about the outcomes and solutions that came from the all hands and the ways in which you can use your policy levels and potentially other resources to do something here and now.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions for Dr. Thompson? Seeing none. Thank you so much for coming and giving us that presentation, Dr. Thompson.